Thank everyone for being here tonight, and I guess we'll start off. Initially, we were not having a meeting, but Councilman Bearden had some issues he wanted to go over that will be on tomorrow night's agenda. And what we need to do is probably go over those first, and then if we have time, we'll go back up and over some of the first items, just to make sure we have any questions or answered before tomorrow night. And Councilman Bearden, if you'd like to start off.
Yeah, I've got three items on the agenda. One is longevity pay for the employees. Now, there was budgeted $25,780 for that longevity pay, and I'm told by the board that the total cost would be $41,900. Now, this is something that we have given to the employees for as long as I can remember, and I've got some copies for each of you from past agendas. If you'll look on, this is last year's. On the front here is last year's. If you'll look at item number three, on the second page there, you'll see we approved $41,600 for longevity paid last year for employees. It would just be $300 more than that. There has been an increase. The last one that I could find, and I had a copy of it, broke it down, was in 2014, and that's brought it back in the paperwork you have, and it addresses each individual employee, how much they would have gotten. But James said there's been an increase in the longevity paid last year, and it's on your agenda. 325 for six years to 10, 11 to 15 years is 425, 16 to 20 is 525, and 21 and over is 625. Anyone under five years would not get any longevity pay. Now, as I said, this is something that the employees have gotten for as long as I've been on the council, and even prior to that, I know they've been giving them to the employees. And they come to expect it every year, and I'm sure most of them use it like a Christmas bonus. I don't know how many of you get a bonus at Christmas time every year. I do. And this is something that we've been giving them for years, and if you take it away from them, then you're reducing their pay instead of equalizing or increasing. This would be a reduction in pay for all the employees that have been here six years or longer.
Okay, now, basically, what are we talking about in total now?
$41,900.
And what's budget?
$25,780 is already in the budget for it.
And what's our proposed difference? Where does that come from?
It would be $16,120. That would be something we would have to add to the budget. It's not budgeted, it's a non-budgeted item.
What's the budget now?
$16,200.
Twenty-five, seven.
Twenty dollars, I think. $16,120.
That's the difference.
That's the difference.
Oh, I got that. What were the budget?
Budgeted $25,780 in the budget for it. And the total cost would be $41,900 this year.
Why the, um, don't remember, I wasn't here, the budget was passed when I was absent. So, why was it, um...
Apparently, we just still would.
When the budget was crafted, was there a particular reason that drove that number for 25?
I asked James that same question.
Okay.
I had that number in there, and I think they just picked up the wrong, or not a good number.
Okay.
I don't know if it was something he saw from previous year or not. I'm certainly supportive of the employees. I think most employees here would say that they welcome my interaction with them, so anything I say would not be necessarily advocating for or against this. I do have some concerns about the policy. I don't have concerns about giving employees raises when they do a good job and they merit that. You all just need to be aware, so that you have full information, that the employees are eligible for merit increases, and those merit increases are 5% per year, which is what I would consider above average in the industry, as far as manual payment. There are plenty of businesses that don't get 5% increases every year. That's up to the staff, up to 10 years, I think it is, or more. So, you know, they do have that option. I was told, I asked when this came up, I asked what this was and why this was implemented some years back, and I was told that it was implemented when the city was not in a position to give raises, that they implemented this system as some recognition of the employee, but they couldn't give the 5% or the full amount of the raise that they had been accustomed to giving. Since then, that obviously has changed, because we're now doing those merit increases every year. So, I think that's one change. The problem fundamentally that I have with this, as it is designed, and I shared this with Councilman Bearden, and I'm not sure what his response was to it, or if any, is that you have employees who qualify for this, as it is described here, who have been suspended once or more during the year. I do philosophically have a problem with rewarding someone with pay, an employee with pay, who has not been a good stinkin' for a year. So, that, I also share my concern with Councilman Bearden when he did, that, you know, with him having a daughter that works here, that there is some concern. I'm not saying there's a legal concern, I'm just saying I personally and others have heard express that perception, that maybe not the wiseest to be promoting that when you have family members that are elders. Well, we've had that in the past with other council members who've had wives, or sons, or daughters, or whatever, that work here. So, those are my comments. I'm certainly pro-employee, and would advocate for those who do a good job to be rewarded as appropriate by the city, but philosophically, I have a problem with rewarding someone that has been suspended for not doing their job.
And when I discussed this with the mayor, I suggested if he didn't feel comfortable giving it to employees that have been suspended or reprimanded for some reason, we could write that in the resolution to exclude those, if that's what the council decided to do.
Do you have a dollar amount attached to, if we were to look at performance-based?
I mean, it could be whatever you make it to be. I mean, the terms of the number of folks who would have been disciplined over the course of the year is not going to make a significant dollar amount. It's not really about the dollars, it's about the principle of that. Probably about five or six that were suspended last year, since, if you look at fiscal year, then you've got another couple that have been suspended since September 30th. So, you've probably got a total similar class in there, so, that have had suspensions.
Do you think that's five, six grand, something like that?
I would guess that it's probably...
What do you mean total?
Probably four.
Maybe about $4,000 if you went to a performance-based objective.
Not a significant dollar amount, kind of in the big picture.
Okay.
And then you would just have to decide what the criteria are, is everybody get it just based off purely off of form, body being here for a certain period of time? Is it tied to, do you have, you know, suspensions? Is it suspensions and reprimands, or demotions? You know, that's your discretion. Whatever you all come up with is what would be implemented. But I just shared with you my thoughts on where I am on that.
And I would agree, I would be concerned with rewarding employees who weren't performing at the same bar as those who were doing their job at, you know, a different level. From a philosophy, you know, from a principle-based standpoint, I understand that we might not be able to get a hard number, as far as how that might reduce the price tag we're talking about, but everywhere I've ever worked, I've always had to at least meet a bar or do my job to a certain standard in order to qualify for anything. So, that would be my only, I would be in favor of some sort of performance metric.
Who would be appropriate to come up with that terminology or wording for us to consider by tomorrow evening? That was my next, that was my next statement.
Yeah.
That's, everyone in the working world, that's strictly an HR-based question and answer. I don't think any of us are in that profession, as far as the council is, because we're going to make decisions, I think we need to get some kind of advice, from a legal perspective, just making sure that we have the right verbiage in whatever decision we make, as far as policy and procedure. You know, that's out of our scope. But I do know this is an HR-based issue that we're talking about.
Now, remind me, I know we just talked about an HR contract recently. What were the, I think, were we going to defer to the city attorney for that type of HR stuff?
They advise us on those matters.
Okay.
You know what?
They advise us on HR matters, the attorney.
Okay.
Do you have...
So, you're going to get HR? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Do you have anything, like, handy, Leslie, that you could easily reference?
No, but just in listening to what y'all are saying, it seems to me that you could include just a provision you already have, that if an employee that is otherwise eligible is dismissed for cause at any time prior to payment, that employee is not entitled to longevity. I don't know why you couldn't say, any employee who has been in the list off the several different types of discipline that the city has suspended, you know, suspended without pay, demoted, terminated, you know, the several options that you have, I don't know why you couldn't just put in another provision, since provided, however, an employee that is otherwise eligible to some longevity pay, who is dismissed prior to payment, or who has been subjected to discipline, including suspension without pay, demotion, I guess those would be the main two, since September 30, 2016, shall not be eligible. I don't know why that would work.
I can live with that.
Okay.
Are we allowed to ask questions?
At a point, we're in our discussion at this time, thank you.
I think that's the key, is you all got to decide what your criteria are, and then we can define it in the policy there.
So, generally, being suspended without pay, in my world, that means you've done something pretty serious. We would agree with that. Okay. And then if you've been demoted, same thing. So, suspended without pay or demotion, I think, is a perfectly fine...
You can also be on dis...
Yeah.
You can also be on discipline, first level, first, second, third level notice. Right, there's all forms of discipline.
Right, right, yeah, so it's just how low or high or hard we want to set.
Do we exercise any type of progressive discipline? Like a phase one, you do this, you're on a phase one, you do the same thing again, it's a phase two, you do the same thing again, you're out?
It's not really addressed that way, because we're subject to the personnel board rules, so we have to go through their process, but through their process, and also just through due process, anyone who receives discipline that involves a decrease in pay or a suspension of their pay for a period of time, always receives a hearing with either their supervisor, or the mayor, or somebody prior to that happening. Depending on the severity of it, they may or may not happen to feel right to the personnel board, but that's why, having come back to suspension without pay, that at least is a certain level that the person should have received a hearing before beginning of their supervisor or the mayor, prior to that happening, and then again, you know, the length of it to drive whether they had an appeal right to the personnel board. But that's at least a line that you can draw, that somebody either has or has not had that. I wouldn't want to get into...
Or a war.
Yeah, or, you know, a good enough evaluation, you know, what is good enough? If somebody didn't get perfect, is that good enough?
Understood.
Or just not. I would rather it be a bright line, and that's at least a bright line that we can draw.
So, suspended without pay and the motion, that feels like that would cover it?
Yeah, I'll look and see if there's anything else that I'm missing. Those are the only things that I can think of, short determination.
Those are well-defined. I mean, when you get into what Councilwoman Wilson was saying, it becomes more subjective. You give someone just a verbal warning, even sometimes you just give a verbal conference and then a lie-up and put them to bed. But if you've been suspended or demoted, it's serious. I mean, not that the others aren't serious, but I mean, it is, in my mind, serious business. If I got suspended, you know, sent home without pay for five days, that's going to, I mean, it's going to get my attention for serious. It's a serious issue, and a repeated issue.
Do we much think we're in agreement that we could come to a compromise, at least on the criteria, if we can work that out between now and tomorrow night?
Yeah, I'm good with what we discussed.
And I wouldn't think it would be who, it's the long-term bonus, the word itself, is tied to performance of the organization. And for the next go-round, we need to look at how the city is sitting at the time we want to grant these bonuses. I've never been in an organization where you just grant a bonus because somebody's been employed for a period of time, if the option is they're not doing well that year. So, we need to consider that for the next go-round, at least. But, Councilman, on yours, would you be kind enough to also look at it from the finance committee's perspective, and see what the alternative source of funding would be for the difference?
Sure.
I think that if we're going to look at it at the time we do our budget, if we see that we're not going to have sufficient funds to do this the next year, then we need to give employees a heads-up that we're not financially able, instead of just coming up on Christmas and then saying, hey, we're not going to give you the longevity pay like we've done last year and the year before, and so forth.
But again, that's something to consider for the next go-round.
Yeah.
I'm not talking about for tomorrow night's discussion.
You know, and I felt there was no warning to anyone that this might or might not happen, when it's happened in the past for a number of years. The reason I put it on here...
I won't be the first to say, even if it happened in the past, it may not... I was trying to get Councilman London, because she asked, but he didn't comment.
I just, maybe this question ought to been asked, I mean, are we able to do this? I know we were on a new budget, but I have a question to ask you.
No, I mean, the short answer is it's an un-budgeted item, so we have to come out of...
John, you meant that we got $25,780 in the budget for this already?
The difference...
It's in there. But it's $41,900 is what it would take to do it, so we're $16,120 short on the budget.
And that figure may go down a few thousand if we adjust for these other factors, but it would still probably be in the $12,000 range.
And your budget is currently in the deficit.
Correct. And considering this will be, what, the fourth time, third, fourth time we've gone to the well in this first quarter?
At least third.
Some point you're not to deal with real...
We're emptying out the well fast, you know, down the Rutherford map for this year. But again, does everybody feel comfortable proceeding in that direction?
Yes.
Yeah. I feel comfortable in proceeding, just making sure we implement the right verbiage or implement the right decision, you know, how to, you know... Potentially exclude... Yeah, those employees that are not meeting performance, you know. That's the only thing I'm questioning, that's all. Councilman? Yeah, I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing. As far as employees who doesn't meet performance, or as we call it, doesn't meet expectations, you know, just making sure that we have the right verbiage in there, and we word it correctly, so it won't come back to bite us, that's all.
Right now, we've been looking at the verbiage suspended without pay, or demotion as criteria to a not meets expectations.
Right, and I guess you would have, I'm going to have some written document to get to that suspension, or...
Yeah, they're suspended, they're being...
Right, being righted on.
So, that's what we talked about thus far, as far as criteria goes. Leslie feels good about suspended without pay and demotion, because that would mean it was a serious nothing fraction.
Is everybody satisfied on that for discussion purposes tonight?
Right.
Okay? Councilman Bearden, you had two other items?
And these, next two go hand-in-hand. Item number six is Resolution 2017-R141, to rescind Resolution 2017-R135 that was asked at the last council meeting, that approved taking Field Number Four, a roughener park, and turn it, baseball field, and turn it into a dog park. Item number seven is Resolution 2017-R142, that allows the area top, Beacon Park, behind the upper pavilion, to be a permanent dog park. We could use Field Number Four, since they've already started preparing it for the dog park, as a temporary, until at such time that the dog park is prepared and ready to be used at Beacon Park. I went up there, and it's about 150 feet deep, and about 130 feet wide, and it's a level, flat area. There's, all we got to do is fence it in, and there's plenty of room for large and small dog park. It's got pavilion up there for people to sit in the shade in the summertime. It's got park benches, I say park, it's got picnic benches up there for you to sit at. It's got a restroom, it's got water, it's got everything that would be needed for the dogs, and it's, it's not being used at this time. It's going to be a perfect location, in my opinion.
Just a quick comment, based on your thought process, Councilman Bearden, why do we even have the resolution to rescind the use of Field Number Four? You mentioned using it as temporary, and that's what we voted to do. We're already in the process of getting that prepared, so why is that even on the agenda?
Because my understanding that that was going to be the permanent location.
No, sir, that you sat here and you voted for, and it was definitely put in as a temporary situation. Now, are we far enough along to consider it a permanent location?
That's...
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I'll defer to our parks, you know, we got several members here.
As I'm talking to the baseball and the dog, I said the dog people, I don't want to call you dog people.
Please don't...
We'll get time to the ideas of the dog park discussion, if you don't mind, please. Thank you.
I don't want to call you dog people. I had a full discussion with everybody.
We'll get general audience discussion when we get through up here, so let's get out.
I had a full discussion with everybody.
Right.
You know, we all concluded that Rutherford was temporary.
Right.
And I talked to them about Beacon being a good place, and they all agreed that Beacon would be a great place to put a dog park. So, because what it does, it keeps foot traffic to Grantville Station, you know, and then for the safety concern, now, if I had a wife, a single lady, or whatever, I don't want her to be at Rutherford by herself, walking the dog. I feel more comfortable for the city's concern, that they're being a high-traffic location, which is at Beacon, so I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that.
But is that something we need to get more definitive planning on, and come back at another point in time, and present that proposal to do that, everybody's going to involve?
Because you have more than just the flat level, you know, you have property that you would, that maybe you can use some of that, so I think we need to look at that as a plan, to make it a permanent place for the dog. And I think they all agree that would be a great place. That's full discussion.
So, that's still a discussion.
And that would free up, that would free up the ballpark for the kids to use in the spring.
And still use it.
Well, actually, they, actually, they use it. I'm just, I'm just, I was talking to both sides. It gets used, it gets used. They don't use the T-ball, the T-ball field is what they're going to use, but the field that we're on, they use the field. But, look, we're here for everybody, not just the old, not baseball, we're here for everybody, and so we're trying to find the best place, to hope that everybody can be satisfied.
Right.
And so, after talking to everybody, not just one side, I talked to all sides, and I think we're all concluded that, yes, they want their field back.
Sure.
I think it's one of the kind of a timeline, when can they get it back from us? And in the meantime, we're going to be here to make that a permanent place.
So, do we need to have either resolution tomorrow night, or the, the first one needs to come off, period, because we know that's temporary, okay?
I'll remove that one then, tomorrow night.
And the second one, is that something we need to actually vote on a resolution for? Do we need to wait till we got more definitive information for that?
Could somebody please move that we could have a chance to speak?
I said, you can, once we're through.
If someone could please move that we could have a chance to speak?
This is not a business meeting, this is just a discussion meeting, we don't vote tonight.
Yeah, you're good, Sean.
We make no decisions tonight, as far as final conclusions. This is a work session, and that's all it is. Go ahead, Councilwoman Wilson, if you have a comment.
Yeah, the only thing, you mentioned earlier that moving a dog park down at Rutherford was temporary. I think long-term, we keep going back and forth, and we're forgetting the process, yeah, I'm talking about process, we've been talking about it for four years now.
Makes sense.
But I think, I think we need to go back to the parks committee, and really think about this thing, because if we're talking about using Rutherford as a temporary location, then moving it to Beacon, in all due respect, we have to look at Beacon, how are we using Beacon now? We're using Beacon Park as a revenue stream right now. I don't know if in particular that would be a good place. I'm not saying that, you know, it would be, but we have to think about it. We have people in the community, and I wish I had more people here from Holly Garnes Neighborhood Association, but we have people in the community that uses it in the pavilion. I don't know if that'd be a good location to have a dog park next to the grill, next to people having parties up there, next to, you know, I don't know. You know, I think that's, that's a discussion that we need to have, because if we move the dog park there, will we continue to have that revenue stream that's being generated by Beacon Park? So, I mean, think about it, do you want to barbecue where dogs are playing around, jumping around, or whatever? I don't have, let me make this statement now, please don't have Peter coming to me or any other animal person, you know, I don't have, I don't have a problem with a dog park. Let me make that disclaimer right now. But is that a good location for a dog park? And I would like to go back to the process, Councilman London, and like some other municipalities do, go back through the process. Let's take it to the parks committee, let's have a, you know, a town hall meeting, or whatever the case may be, and let's talk about this thing. Let's talk about the long-range plan, why we got a temporary location right now.
I think that's the key, if I could...
Yeah, go ahead.
I hear you, what you're saying, and I agree with most of that. I think that's the key, and that's what we talked about at the last meeting, was even at Rutherford, is looking at an overall master plan for that, you know, when we were talking about soccer, and when we were talking about dogs, and we were talking about baseball, that whole thing needs to be redone. And so, I don't think we can sit here tonight and say what the future is, until we take a comprehensive look at it, like you said, and I've heard those same comments that you have said about...
And again, the real discussion tonight is whether or not this item stays on the agenda for tomorrow night, or is it something that needs more overview before it comes back to us for a decision, had a general discussion. The general discussions need to occur in public-type venues, and at the meeting, that we actually have something to present.
Well, I still say it's a council decision, whatever the majority, I'm...
Go ahead, Council.
All right, I ran a couple of stats yesterday, all right? So, I was looking at both properties on Google Earth and doing some measurements, all right? I'm not saying these are exact, these are just based off the imagery and the data I was able to gather. So, approximately, Field Four, 19,890 square foot, approximately. Beacon, now, I know there's some room in the woods to expand possibly, I don't know what that looks like, all right, but we know there's going to be some clearing and stuff that might have to happen. From what I could see, around the old tennis courts, it was around 12,500 square feet, so there's a very large difference. I looked up on the internet, AKC recommends at least a half an acre for a dog park. An acre is 43 odd thousand square... So there's a very large difference. I looked up on the internet, A K C recommends at least a half an acre for a dog park. An acre is forty-three odd thousand square feet. So even the, even Field Four is a little short of it, but is a lot larger of a space than the Beacon Park. When we were originally talking, we even flirted with the idea that maybe there's an opportunity for two dog parks, okay? We talked about the fact that this is a temporary solution and that we want to take a holistic look at Roughner. I'm in favor of that ballpark, Field Four, being a dog park until we get a holistic vision for Roughner Ballpark. Do we proceed with Beacon? Absolutely. Sure, I'd love to take a look at it. But is Beacon the answer to Field Four? I don't believe so. I think Beacon might have an opportunity to be a standalone answer, but I think um Field Four is a good option for a temporary dog park until we take a holistic look at Roughner. That is my thoughts. And to piggyback on Bobby Joe, you know, um, there's not a whole lot of shaded area at Beacon right now aside from the pavilion. But to go with what you're saying, if that is rented, then that eliminates some of the ability for people to kind of hang out at the pavilion while their dogs are at the park. And then to go, do I want to rent that pavilion if I know I've got a dog park five feet away from it?
Councilperson, just a quick question. What do you think would be a reasonable amount of time for the long-term solution for your committee to get together, get with the public, and have some type of recommendation that we would really consider?
We could meet, we could meet in a week. We can meet next Monday, Monday night.
But how, is that gonna tie in with all the long-range plans and everything, so?
We could, we could meet and come up with a long-range plan, but what we're gonna have to do, we'll have to do an evaluation of every part now to find out exactly what's the best. You wanna talk about a permanent place? I, I just think, I think Beacon's a good place and I, I don't really think uh it will have an effect on being that, that pavilion because it would be separate. It'd be, it'd be separate from the pavilion.
Can we, can we agree for tonight's discussion that basically this is not something that needs to be on the agenda tomorrow night for a vote? That we need to bring something back in the near future?
I will table it till the next council meeting, but I will not remove it.
And if you do that, you're intentionally silencing the people. You are intentionally disallowing people to speak.
Sir, appreciate the comments and again, you'll have your chance to talk, but remember, we're doing this as a temporary solution. The council that's in charge of Parks and Recreation has been asked to get with the public and you won't be silenced. This again is a work session to decide what we're going to vote on tomorrow night.
We have organized everyone to come tomorrow and you are intentionally silencing us.
Table eight does not remove it from the agenda. It's still an agenda item at that point. There's still an opportunity to talk about agenda items at the meeting.
If I table it tomorrow night, it will have to come up for the next regular council meeting. It will not go away.
Let me just, let me chime in on that. There's no way in two weeks you're gonna have a long-range master plan or anything.
Absolutely, no, it's worth it.
Yeah, so if you think you're gonna do it in two weeks, you're, you're just fooling yourself and everybody else here.
We can start the, we can start the discussion in two weeks.
Can I make a comment?
Go ahead, please.
I don't, I don't think everyone knows, uh, Councilperson London and Councilperson, I said this while you were out. Councilperson London has been working on a long-range plan and I noticed that some comments were made that they weren't aware of what was going on. But the Parks Committee, Councilperson London, and uh it's been several years ago, Councilperson Bearden, I don't know if you were aware of this, has been working on a long-range plan for our parks. Even a master plan for our parks that was about to uh be introduced, what, uh, beginning of this term or something? I don't know what it is. Ms. McAnally or whatever her name is, I think she had an overall city plan, you know, Mayor, I think you mentioned that. But you have been working on a master plan for our parks for, I know, three years. I know three at least. That needs to be introduced, need to be brought to the council and, you know, let everyone know what's going on because it's out there.
Where is it?
I, I get your head. Terrence, Terrence, Terrence seen it. Bobby's seen it. A lot of folks in the neighborhood have seen, have seen what Beacon could look like.
What Beacon and Roughner. Yes.
Roughner and everything. What it could look like.
Can you have that for all the councilors?
And I can get it. I get it. I can call my guy and get his email to you.
But Bobby, I mean, Councilperson Wilson, just the one thing, because we, we hung up on that before. What McAnally was doing was making a proposal, not a plan. They were proposing that they go and develop a plan. They haven't, they have not developed a plan yet. But no, they were wanting.
We got, we got a, yeah, we got a proposal. I've still got a copy and it's about that thing.
But it was, it was.
What she was gonna do, what she was gonna do. She was gonna take a look at every piece of park, Kahada River, Beacon, Green Space, Roughner, Eller, every piece of property we have in Irondale and let us know. She's professional, you know, they're kinda like Railroad Park. You get that kind of work. And let us know what would best suit with our property. Instead of us trying to figure out ourselves, us non-professional in that field, trying to figure out where different things should go. She was gonna do that plan for us so, write it back to the council. Now, when you have a plan and know exactly what you can put at Roughner, which you can put at Eller, which you can put at Beacon, now it allows us to go and move forward with grants and whatever to figure out what we need to do. And that was, that was what she was gonna do for us. As a professional as she is, that's what she does. You know, that's how uh Railroad Park and those kind of things got here because that's what she did. She come up with a plan, write it to the council, and then we, we move forward. And what that does, allow us to say, all right, we can do this right now. We do this park now, we do this park five years from now, we do this park ten years from now. But I think right now where we are, where we are right now is a standard.
I think part of that.
Where the dog park should go, where's baseball.
From what I remember sitting out in the audience during that discussion, I think y'all kind of put it to the side because of the extreme cost at the time, if I remember correctly.
It wasn't, it wasn't gonna, it wasn't gonna go through, yeah.
I can't remember what. I just remember that.
It was, it was a negotiation. I think it was a billion thousand or something like that. I think it was a negotiation.
We couldn't negotiate.
Yeah, it was a negotiation.
So what you may want to look at, which I think we had some discussion last meeting on this, and we didn't call any names, but um maybe you take one park, Roughner, and say, okay, what can we make that? I mean, rather than biting off the whole fifty thousand dollar job for a plant, maybe you get a plant for five thousand or ten thousand for one park or whatever it is. And, and develop one at a time rather, I mean, we don't have the funds to hardly do one. So if we get a grandiose master plan for, for everything and we spend fifty thousand dollars on the plan and have nothing to start implementing the plan, so maybe we, we know where our properties are. We know where they are. And we start picking them off and saying, okay, here's where we're gonna start. I mean, you've done some work in the past. The city's done work in Beacon and, and upgraded it. So then maybe you choose your next one if that's Roughner, then choose it, then come up with a design and a plan and see what you can get on there. Maybe you can get a soccer field, baseball fields, and a dog park on there by the time, you know, if you reconfigure it. Who knows until you draw it out.
Yeah, Councilperson London knows that too. I'm sorry, I'll put you on the spot.
All right, thank you. So we'll leave it on the agenda for tomorrow night and then we'll see, okay? Okay, now that gets the three things, Terrence. We agree that number six would come off, correct, for tomorrow night?
Yeah, I'll take, I'll remove six and table seven until the next council meeting.
Real quickly before we uh open up for any comments, uh, we have at this point five people that have volunteered for industrial development. As a council, we have to decide this is for a one-time project related to Motion Industries to uh return property to their title, which is paid for, uh, which was done through an industrial board setup in order to get it financed, et cetera, when it was done. Uh, we need two more people. At this point now, the question is, do we want to get a full, uh, even more than that? We're having trouble getting our base seven. This is for a one-time project and these would be for staggered terms, two, four, and six. Right now, we have Claude Perry, Jim Snyder, Susan Meadows, Matthew Lepore, and Jesse Rayford. Jesse's been on the committee before. We're still short two members. And again, it would be for this one thing. It doesn't have a long-term life of any nature, although they do have long terms. And then we have to decide are we wanting to go through a review process or how do we want to do it? But we've already delayed for almost two months now, I believe, getting the board set up and it's, we need to bring this to conclusion for Motion Industries. So be considering that because it would be great if we could do some type of vote at the first or second meeting in January tops. But if you know anybody else, uh, we got some of these members by asking the other night at this planning zoning meeting, and I've got some volunteers off the committee itself. So we need at least two more to make up a seven-person slate if we can agree to vote on it that way.
I don't know.
Okay, so if, just get those names into myself and the mayor and uh we can get back together on that.
What if I get them into the council? And let the council know also?
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll pass them all out if they come in. I'm just trying to collect them now, see if we get enough to even get our base.
I just wanna make sure everybody.
Yeah, well, everybody will see them before we vote. Not a problem. And we do have uh tomorrow night, the contract for the medical software for the fire department. That is a budgeted item. I think we said it would come out of uh, it's, it's a line item, correct, if we understood correctly?
It's actually already been paid, from my understanding.
Has it?
It, it's my understanding that the city has already paid the full amount that it's being required to pay, but the company has changed names. There's been a merger or something. So what this contract does is really just switch us over to the new company. We have to go through their contract to be able to work with them. But even though the contract itself does have renewal provisions and provisions that certain amounts will be due if it's not terminated prior to September thirtieth. I've worked closely with Brad Dawson. He's gonna ensure that a termination by us is sent probably in January, say, effective September thirtieth to ensure that there won't be any payment due under this. And that way the city will be able to negotiate a new contract, say in the summer, after they see whether they like this software or not, if they want to continue on with this or do something different.
Okay. Any questions on that for tomorrow night? All right, thank you. And then we have one that strictly uh has to do with the easement for a sign that will be at the Mercedes property. And I believe that's just more housekeeping than anything else that's allowing us access. Any comments, Mayor, or any additional?
That's exactly what it is. It's where they put their sign in the median there. They have to have an easement from us to do that. And then we have to have make sure that we have access. So if there's any utility work or anything else, at least we have to have that, so.
Now, are there any comments you would like to make on the one about the River Tree contract and what that actually involves? So?
That's just an auditing service that you all have used before. Uh, I think it's also doing it.
Right.
Uh, for making, it's supposed to be checking and making sure that it's being right. Business taxes are being paid to the right municipality. If it's Irondale, it's a company. Or if it's Birmingham, or, or if someone sent it into Birmingham, it should become an Irondale company. All in service to help us track them down.
Any real questions on that? It's a continuation of the service we've done in, done in the past. I think uh we found when we've owned other municipalities and vice versa, it goes both ways. But it's definitely something you need in place to make sure things are the right and accurate. Um, so no additional questions on that. Probably will not. Uh, if you have some additional names by tomorrow night, if you can just pass them on, we'll put that on the first agenda in January if we can. And uh, any other questions on items for tomorrow night while we've got? Go ahead.
The two sixty-nine, eight eleven, I'm trying to remember. Was that a budgeted item for the sidewalks?
Okay.
So I think your plan on that was, I think, and I'm not positive, uh, James, with that answer is was to take that out, gas, oil, and tax.
I wasn't sure if he had made it.
That's an old, that's, that goes back prior to this administration. And that's the sidewalks that are going from Roughner to Montvallo. And on us, the bid actually, the bid actually came in lower than what I, I think original anticipation or estimation was three hundred and some thousand. It came in at whatever that number is, two something. Uh, it's still, it's still a shared cost, eighty, twenty, I think, but it's lower than the number that was presented before.
So it is able to come out of that particular tax?
I need to, I'll confirm that for you for tomorrow night.
Okay.
Now, is this to uh, to actually do the project? Because I know, I know this come up, has come up before and we've had to get uh we've got, have to, our city engineer to, I don't know, three times they, they've had to re, re-organize that for that grant and.
I think this is actually.
This is actually going to get done this time?
Yeah, I think this is actually do something.
Okay.
It's my understanding. I'll try to confirm those numbers for tomorrow.
It started in two thousand eight.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's been a long track to connect the number discussion from the other side, but this should lead to conclusion. And again, it is covered. It's not a non-covered item. Any other questions for tomorrow night based on what the agenda is as of this point? Now, if anybody's here that would like to make comments on anything we discussed tonight, again, this is a work session. We don't vote on anything. Tomorrow night is the voting night when we hold regular council. Please.
Um, I'd like to just say that first of all, I have dogs and I love my dogs. And I want y'all to have a dog park. But the gentleman said that the um field does not get used. Well, we are in the process of revitalizing our baseball program. Uh, we're having um registration in January and February and we're doing a um blitz to get out all the work, to the words to all of the kids and their parents so that they can come and play ball. Irondale used to be a mega ball field, a mega team. We sent someone to, to stay to uh the World Series on an annual basis. And I've only been here seven years, but I know Irondale football and Irondale baseball because of my children and grandchildren playing against them. And I just think that it's, first of all, I wanna know how, how long is temporary? I mean, you know, temporary could be two months. It could be two years. It could be six years. We cannot do without Field Four for even a year because we're gonna start playing ball in uh, what, April, March, and um, we're gonna have to have it. So I, as, as someone that is looking forward to the baseball, would like to know how long temporary is. I mean, you know, temporary could be anything in, in different people's minds. And if they get used to going to Roughner Park, are they going to, are y'all going to do anything to get the temporary out of it? So um, that's, that's what I'd like to know, is what temporary is.
Thank you.
How long is temporary?
Appreciate it. Yes, Mayor.
Um, so on December fourth, it was announced that Field Four would be taken. I might have to discuss some issues. Um, that Field Four would be taken for the dog park and voted on December fifth. The president of the ballpark and none of the baseball community was notified. The old president was notified. He was not in position to speak to which field would be used and which one would be appropriate for temporarily used. We, the people that actually use the field, are asking for Field Number Two, not Field Number Four to be used. The Number Four is one of our most used fields. And it's in the middle, which is actually the worst location to pick. Um, we don't like the idea of sharing because we are trying to, as you know, like she said, we've had years, we're trying to rally support and get our kids excited about meeting other children and their parents. Um, but it's kind of really hard to do that if we don't have a place to play. So we are asking to switch to Field Number Two if it is temporary and also to define how long temporary is, who's gonna pay to put it back into a baseball field.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I believe we had one more in the back of the room. Yes, sir.
Oh, it's great. Um, concerning the, the field, my son has played at that field ever since he played T-ball. And all we will use, we use.
Come up front.
Sit around.
You have a name. You have a name. Come on in.
Just here, man.
Take the whole five.
Thank you.
Take a seat.
My name is uh Terrance Cook. I live in Holiday Gardens and.
And we have been, my son has played at Ruffner Park from t-ball all the way up. We even went to the World Series in Georgia, all the way up. We used each, every part of those, those fields, because I can remember, I coached. But my son has graduated, graduation is here at the City of Dallas. And the thing is about the field is that when I was coaching there, I saw very little support from the council concerning, we were the ones that bought the food and everything from the concession stand. And I remember one time, they were talking about getting money from the concession stand to give to, I don't know, I guess the council, or however they was trying to do. But I have, like I say, I have no problem with the dog park. I have a dog. A lot of people own dogs. But the thing is, if you're going to consider, as she said, if you're going to consider the field, you have to understand, those fields in the middle around the concession stand are the ones that can use for months. And those are the heart of Irondale baseball. We're trying to bring the baseball back, because for some reason, it got lax. And I would hope that the council would give more support to the field, pretty much to all our parks. You know, I have two little girls of four and five. We have to go to Homewood to play at the playground, because the playground is so bad by Holiday Gardens. But I would not want my child to play on them, because they rusted and where they're located at. It's the, it's the, it's the playground, right when you go into, from Holiday Gardens, you go through the little walkway, those little, you know, that's dangerous.
That's very dangerous.
Yes. So, and I don't think we have to go outside our community to get activities here, you know? So that's just my take. There's some, you know, consideration that, you know, we are going to bring it back. I love this community. I love everything about this community. But I would like for the community to at least kind of help us out. You know, I don't mind digging into my pockets. It was so to help. But at the same time, we do want to have consideration that we do have the council back on the things that are trying to bring this community back, especially our baseball program.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Are we going to get an opportunity to address some of these questions?
Yes, we can. Let's let everybody out and speak.
Sure. Okay. Tim Ford.
Please.
Cindy Quayar, and one of the things that I think is essential right now, we're talking about temporary, and during that time, I think the best approach to all of this is to get a count. How many kids are involved in the baseball program? That is essential, because you've got six fields. The other thing I wanted to mention is you had a group of people who love dogs, who need a dog park. They took, they took the bull by the horns, they went out, did fundraising, went and talked with home people, went and did all these things to make it easy for the city council to say, this is a, this is a good temporary solution. The community took the initiative, and that's what needs to happen with everything in Irondale. Stop coming to the city council and expect the city council to do it all. The community needs to take the initiative. If you have baseball, take the initiative. If you have soccer, take the initiative. If you have a dog park, these people went out and did the work. And my understanding is, they've already done part of the work already. So to say, no, you can't have that field, the work has been done, it's a temporary solution. In the meantime, find out how many people are involved in baseball and find a way to work with it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Yes, sir.
Ben Bremer. First thing, we did not decide we wanted Ruffner Park Barney Field. The mayor had a vision and said, we're not going to pay this exorbitant rent to the landlord for Branson Station. And we're going to close the dog park. And Charlie, you said temporary moving to Ruffner Field. Okay, that's the way the law played out.
How long is temporary?
And it was going to be temporary. Now, I have empathy for people who say, how long is temporary? But I have an answer for you. It depends on number one, coming up with a formulated plan, and number two, coming up with the money, neither of which have been presented out. What we're hearing, temporary field four. Why? Because we were told by, I mean, Tony Pearson of Lee, that that field wasn't used. So, okay, I'm sorry, that was the information we got. You've got six ball fields. I'm sorry, I don't think you use all six of them all the time. I could be wrong, but you're going to have to show me first. Secondly, now being pushed into Beacon, with all due respect to Councilman Bearden, that would be the worst choice. First thing, you would end up putting a dog park behind the pavilion where, and I go to the dog park twice a day, I see people out there, family reunions, what councilman Wilson said, chirp, shrewds, they're cooking brats, they're cooking dogs, they're cooking hamburgers, and you want to have a hundred and ten pound winery running through there? I don't think so. That's stupid. You end up losing both.
Okay, the folks, please.
And they, these things, you, the pavilion, and I say, hey, great for them. But cooking food on fire and dogs just doesn't mix. So you end up with something like that.
Let me, let me try to bring to some conclusion here. We know there are two factions here tonight representing. We know we've got work to do. I think we have to turn it to Parks and Recreation. I think some of the councilmen had some comments they would like to make. We've got a group, you know, right now, for a show of hands, who is wanting to speak in favor of the dog park? So we've got that group. And who is speaking opposed to the dog park being at Ruffner?
For baseball.
For baseball. For baseball, okay. So again, we've got our two factions in the room tonight. This is not going to be resolved. We need to have a quick move forward, and we've got a committee that can do that and handle it. I think there were some comments that wanted to be made. We want to start with Councilman London, if you don't mind. It's not, I'm not trying to silence anyone in the audience, but we're saying the same thing over and over again, and we're not going to get a resolution doing that. We've got to get in a structured manner. And again, tonight, this is not a council meeting. This is a work session. It is strictly for us to decide agenda item that we may have questions on for tomorrow night to vote. And there will not be a vote tomorrow night, potentially, to do anything related to the dog park. But we are going forward with what we have already voted on, because it is already underway and will be temporary. The Parks Committee maybe can come up with some idea of what temporary means. I cannot answer that right now. I don't think anyone can, but we can look into that.
Chairman, can you guarantee that we will have more time to talk tomorrow?
You will have your three minutes before the mic, like anyone else in the audience, if you want to make comments.
Can I ask?
And it might, it might work well, which worked well for some of the dog park issues. One or two people got everybody together, and they represented the group rather than have eight or 10 people say the same thing over and over again, because that's not a use of either side's time.
We have a petition, sixty eight people have signed it. That's what we're here trying to do.
Well, this, again, this is not a meeting for business, business decisions. This is strictly to get ready. Can we, let's start down.
Let me just, let me just say this. I am, I am so excited. I am so excited, so fired up, to see the number of people that love Irondale. You know, when you think it's a negative, you mean it's a positive. For the folks to come out and fight for what they want Irondale to look like. So I'm just, I'm just letting you know, I'm excited about this, because this is what I've been waiting on for five years. I've been fighting this fight, actually thirty years, for the city of Irondale. I've been fighting these kids with these kids, I've been with these kids, baseball, football, basketball, soccer, I've been fighting. And this is the first time, first time, that the citizen has come out and forced their opinion about dogs and children. And it's not, and I told you all along, it has never been about me, but it's always been about the city of Irondale. So I'm excited that we've got some folks that want to get around the table and decide how they want Irondale to look like. And I think the mayor's excited about that, and I think this council is excited about that. I think they're proud about that, because now, hopefully, we can get some stuff taken care of. And that's what this is all about. It's not about, it's not about you against them and them, you know, and you should, you know, when you talk to people, you have to talk to them in a nice way. I understand the work that they've done, but you have to also understand their perspective also, understand both sides of the, of the thing. Can't just say, because I like what they've done, we're going to push these people aside. No. We have to talk about both sides of what's happening. So I am excited about this. I'm excited about this park committee. And now, we've talked about a plan, with the plan that they're trying to put together for all the parks, and this is included, dogs.
Sure does.
The plan that we, they've talked about includes everybody. I talked to Ms. Michael today on the way over here. She tells me, I love my dog, but if you want some help with baseball or soccer, please call her. And I'm, I'm telling you what, I'm excited about that, that finally, we brought some folks together that's going to get some things done for the city of Irondale. And that's what we've been looking for. And that won't be about, John, it won't be about the park committee, but it'll be about you, and that's what it should be all about. So I'm excited about it. I love your passion. I love your passion, because this tells me that you love the city of Irondale. And so, don't, don't let that fire run out, because what's going to happen now, it's going to be a long process. It's going to be a tough process. Right? And we have to be all together, because we all love the city of Irondale. So if you're ready to work, I think the mayor, myself, the council are ready to help you push this thing forward. And we're going to do all that we can to make sure everybody get what they need for the city of Irondale.
Counselor Spah, do you have another comment, please?
Sure. And I want to piggyback on what John's saying, which is why I, I contributed on Facebook to the conversation and everything, because I do care about that, and I want to thank you for that, for that, for that passion. I think it's a good thing. It feels a little negative in here right now with, you know, this versus that, but I would agree, there's a lot of good energy here, and I definitely don't want to lose that momentum. How long is temporary? I don't know. I absolutely have no idea. All right? So the, the thing is, is like we've said a couple times, we've got to take, and I want to do this sooner than later. I'm not trying to say, oh, I'm going to push this back for two years or something like that. I want to do this sooner than later, capitalize momentum that we've got right now, and take a holistic look at Ruffner Park and how it can be utilized best, incorporating, you know, maybe all sorts. I don't know. We've got to take a look at the property and get that. We've been talking about this, I guess a big problem that I'm, I'm having personally, and I'm just going to be transparent, is the fact that we've been talking about this since, since the end of October. Now, yes, I know the decision was just passed recently, but we've been having these conversations since at least, and to reference a news clip, I know not everybody does Facebook, maybe not everybody, not everybody watches Fox Six, but I think, was it Fox that they did that interview on? So there was multiple ways that this was actually brought up into the light, that we've been talking about this since late October. Citizens came forward with the dog park, you know, and, and we acted accordingly, based on the information we got and was brought to us and everything. And then Frank from Public Works, they've already been out there for days doing work, moving soil around. I can't disrespect that work that you guys have done and say, sorry, you know, good job, redirect your energy. You guys have laid topsoil, you guys have put in gates. I mean, it's, it's pretty much ready to go, for the most part. I would, would you agree with that? I mean, there's still some more work to do, Frank? Okay. But I mean, you guys have done a lot already, right?
Yeah, we have the cars alongside him, we put the gates in.
Sure. And from a, from a legislative, if you want to look at this legislatively, you know, going back on a decision that we made two weeks ago, after we've already spent money and done, done labor, that sets a really bad precedence, that we aren't strong enough to carry forward our decisions that we make up here. So there's, I look at that as well. Sorry to ramble, but, you know, we do need to put a plan in place for Ruffner. So temporary, what does that mean? I don't have a good answer for you now, but we want to take a holistic look at Ruffner. I think Beacon is a good second park, but I agree with some of the other concerns. Like I said, second park, I'm not saying one and only, but I'm saying second option. You know, I think there's ways to continue to enhance Beacon, that would make it an even more comprehensive park. So that's, that's kind of my, my thing there. I like field four because of its proximity to its parking lot right there. You don't have to drag your dog all the way through the front parking lots to get to that field. It's got a parking lot right there. So I know that was some concerns about dogs and kids mixing and things like that. I think as far as hedging your bets goes, it's a pretty good location for that. So I think I hit all the things. I'm probably forgetting something, but...
Counselor Bearden, did you have any redirecting?
Yeah. I've heard in the last week, I've heard from both people about the dog park and the baseball field. And I know that field four is used. You've got a field that is used for t-ball, and once the kids get old enough, they don't play t-ball anymore, five, six, seven year olds, they use field four. And then they progress from field four, the girls go on to softball, and the boys go on to the smaller baseball field. But field four is used for the, for the younger children, just play the baseball for the five, six, and seven year olds. So it is used every year. And as far as the dog park, I'm trying to help find an alternative so that the baseball, the ball field can be used by the kids to play ball. And I've heard from several people in the, in the community, and the best suggestion that I've heard was Beacon Park. That's why I put it on here. And, you know, I knew there'd be objections from both ends, but we're trying to find an alternative so that everybody will have what they need, a ballpark and a, and a dog park.
Thank you. Counselor Wilson, I think you had a comment before we started, far in.
I did what Counselor Spah is saying. I mean, not everything, but the majority.
Any questions for the business that will be on the agenda for tomorrow night from the council?
May I have my turn on this?
Just please.
Because I, I want to, I want to thank the council for, for your comments just now, because I think we're probably in as close of agreement as we have been on these types of topics. And I'll address this to you all as well. I like the passion too. I like what you said. Six months ago, nobody was thinking about baseball and what was happening at Ruffner, or really dog parks for that matter. None of you were really doing that. So if you look at the fields now as they are, how many, how many attended the game last year at Ruffner? One, two, three? Two, two, three families. Okay, that's my point. That's my point, is that it hasn't been, it can be. My son's played baseball there. I don't have a dog, okay? But I think, I think that both of these can coexist, and I think we can look at the, the great piece of property we have as an asset, and figure out a plan for where we can make it bigger and better than what any of us are sitting here right now thinking, because we're thinking in silos right now. We're thinking about dog parks, and we're thinking about baseball, and we're thinking about, you know, just, just whatever our focus is right now. There's, there's a line in the, the play, The Lion King, where, where, who is it, the small one? Somebody says to, to, to the, to the parent, you, or the parent says to the little lion, you are more than what you have become. We are more than what we have become with these issues. And we can be better than what we are, and we should be better than what we are, and we shouldn't be fighting each other. I tell you, the time that we spend on the negative energy, I think there, I think Counselor London said, let's take it and turn it positive and work together. And you might be just surprised at what we can become in all this. There are six fields up there right now. There were, according to Counselor Bearden, there were three teams that played. I heard four, but three teams that played there last year. That's a field for every team with two, two fields left over. So we, we just need to look at it comprehensively and see what we can make it, and make it more than what we think that it can be even today. That's what we need to do. And, and, and I think I've heard that from every one of these counselors going down the line here, even with the ditto there, because that's what I was, I was saying, yeah, 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 as these guys spoke on that. But we need you all to come alongside and not just stay in your silo, but say, how can we coexist? Because it's not dog, I laugh every time I hear this, or I see this stupid stuff on Facebook about the dog people and the baseball people. It's not dog people and baseball people. We're all residents of Irondale, and we all are in the same boat. And when we raise the level of the water, the tide for one, we all rise. And that's what we need to do. And that's what we need to do. And we need leadership from the council and we need to come up with a plan and we need support from the residents to make it happen. And I think we can do it. I think we can because of that passion, because of that, that desire that we have in our silos. Let's just break down the walls, come together and make it more than what we have become at this point. I hope that you will join these guys as they lead the way in doing that.
Thank you for your comments, Mayor. Just for everybody to know, the three people sitting, starting on that end to the blue, are your Parks and Recreation Committee members. And they are the ones that will take the point on this, I would assume. Did you join? Okay, I'm sorry, you went in on with the education. Sorry. The three, starting on Counsel London, Counsel Spivey and Counsel Wilson. So they will be the ones taking point and going forward. And you're welcome to direct comments directly to them as, as a committee or directly, you know, to the mayor's office. All of our emails are very simple to remember. First initial, last name, at cityofirandaleal.gov. And that will get to anybody on this podium if you wanted to send comments.
Anytime you want to get together, all three of us can be there together. But two of us can be there to have discussions. What I'm saying, without having to call the, without having to call the. Two of us, two of us can be there together without having, without calling our park committee. So anytime you want to meet, two of us or two of them, we all get together and have discussions. Correct?
I have, I have a look here from our council.
How many people, who all is on this?
Three. One, two, three.
Okay, well, the two would be a core.
One.
Thank you. I think you were talking about this council member.
Council members, right, but a committee is actually a body as well. Let's say you can't have a core.
Just one, one final thing here.
Yes, sir.
Is just, just so you guys know, you guys might know this. If you don't know this, but if you do, I apologize. These called meetings are the only times we can have these conversations. So sometimes I think there's an expectation that we're out there talking to each other about these items. That does not happen. We might, from a high level, give our opinion from one to the other, but we do not have, we don't have the privilege of talking about this stuff unless we have a meeting. So I just want to throw that out there and say, hey, we're not just in, you know, trying to say, hey, come to our meeting and nothing's going to get done. It's just this is the only topic to talk about.
We're not, we're not talking behind closed doors.
Right.
And, and hopefully, by having these work sessions, when we get to the council meeting, which is actually a business meeting. And as Counsel Wilson pointed out, the state of Alabama, our no legislation requires allowing people to talk at that meeting. It's strictly to do the city's business, but Irondale has had a history of allowing the people that come to the meetings to make their comments known. But again, I hope we don't make decisions based on just those people that come to the meetings because that's only a handful out of a city full of people, which we've got census of over 12,000 people. So I don't make decisions. So I hear what comes from my council members as we get together for these discussions and some of the comments from the audience and what people in my district send me in the other room. And I have had absolutely, I've had maybe two comments on one issue and not on the other in my district. So the people that are out there that are in support of this, they need to be active and this is a point group that you can work with to get that movement started. I think we had one more comment and then we'll.
Excuse me, if you don't mind, I think you had, you, you wanted to say something.
Well, there's a lot of things I want to say honestly, but, but one of them, just directed at that, there's a, you all have a petition with sixty-eight signatures on it. And there's an additional four hundred if you add together. This is four hundred and sixty-eight if you add together soccer and baseball altogether. So a lot of people talking about it. I don't know how many emails you've got and I've had people say that they're sending you letters, but I don't know if they are or not. But there are a lot of people concerned and the reason they're concerned is they feel like there's not a long-term vision that is going in front and pulling freight. It feels like there's temporary decisions being made without a long-term clear plan. So I, I just don't understand why we would have a temporary solution to this ballpark and, and say, it's going to be temporary until we can come up with and agree upon long-term plan and figure out how we're going to budget it to actually do the long-term plan.
I'll, I'll just make one quick comment. Those of you that came to the meeting and looked at our budget, we're going into a budget year with a $700,000 deficit, not a surplus. There are three of us that are new to this council or to the mayor's office. And we have been in office approximately a year now and things have come along, but we've also had some challenges to overcome to get to this point. So this is a way of moving forward slowly but surely. And I think the mayor has the point. Things will be better, but you're going to have to crawl a little bit before we get to that point.
That's what makes it a permanent solution though. That practicality of it makes it permanent.
Mr. Bishop, I think this lady first and then I'll explain.
I have a quick, Gail Tucker with the Holy Gardens. I have a quick comment. I did try to email today and it was referred back to me as undeliverable, that our website is under reconstruction or something. Is that just a glitch on my end? So I can't email you.
I'll turn.
Yes, you'll talk to our experts, she'll definitely. There's something I get every time I send something out that says, it's something with a server on AOL in the UK. That doesn't mean your email doesn't go through. It just doesn't work through that server. Yes, Mr. Bishop?
Just a couple of questions. How much does the city spend on maintaining Ruffner Park right now? They spend any funds other than just general maintenance, cutting the grass? Okay, does the baseball associations charge a fee for the players to play? And does any of that fee come to the city for maintenance? Or does the baseball association maintain the property, draw the lines, but grade the, the dirt, whatever else?
They, they grade the dirt, they draw the line, they, a lot of times cut the grass. They do all of them. Don't be surprised what they do.
But does any of the fees that they charge?
And the fee that they charge, the only thing, the only thing really the city does, been done for years, is giving lights. They're trying to have, they're trying to light some mostly. And I think that's, we got charged for the lights in, I don't think we're charged for.
Lights, water, we cut.
Lights, water, they cut, they cut some fields, but for drawing the lines and, and doing the field and things like that, most of that's, that's handling the, the, the baseball.
But, but as, if you go out there and look, you'll see that things are run down. I mean, the benches that are down there. The dugouts are start going down here. Could not the, the baseball associations contribute to maintaining the park?
They don't need that kind of money.
I hope because like, when my daughter plays soccer at Shades Valley, it cost me almost a thousand dollars for her to do that.
You have to be in that field to understand all of it. Looking, looking, looking from the outside in, doesn't explain it enough.
They don't charge anywhere near that.
They don't, they don't charge, they don't charge enough to do that kind of thing. Yeah, but they want the kids to play if they're born.
Mr. Ray?
What happened to the guy who was leasing the park? Do we ever get our money?
He does, he does. All he can do is force doing his part.
But I'm talking about, didn't he guarantee us $200,000 or some kind of?
He, he spent some money in there. I'm not quite sure.
How much money has he put in?
I, I don't have that figured right away.
I mean, should that?
But it's still not, it's still, it's still not enough.
Isn't that something you should know is how much he's paid and how much he owes us?
He's actually, he's supposed to, bought the field to look better than what they used to be.
But what about the money? I mean, what, do we know that he spent $200,000 or are we just saying he looks better?
No, I don't think he's spent $200,000.
But wasn't that, what do you agree to do? Why is he still involved?
Is he still, we didn't give him that, that line to pay $200,000.
I thought it was for a year.
No.
I think that the contract was for a year and he was going to put $200,000.
The contract, he's still on a contract right now.
He's what?
He's still on a contract right now.
Well, what are we going to do about getting our money? And what I'm saying is, why are we in this shape if he pledged $200,000 to fix it?
Let me, let me tell you, it's not his problem, bro. I mean, we can't, we can't put it on him. It's not, that's not his, it's not his fault. That's not trying to put it on him.
But if he did his part, we wouldn't have to be paying this money.
Wrong answer. Wrong answer.
What's wrong with that?
Have you been out there lately?
Yeah.
$200,000 is not going, they're going to put those people.
But he hasn't done his part.
He's done, but what he can do, he's done it. He's, he's doing it. He's doing it.
But that's not what he contracted to do.
He's, he's, right, he's doing it. So that's not to put it on him. It's not, it's not his fault.
It's our fault for not seeing that he does it.
No, the, the fields have been in bad shape longer than he's been out there.
But he agreed to do it for that.
Yeah, but that's not putting it on him.
And we've let him get revenue from having clinics and this and that, but he hasn't done his part.
That's not putting it on him. That's not, that's not.
I'll take one more comment and then we'll adjourn.
I just want to address why Ruffner, why as opposed to Beacon or Ellard. As the mayor had told me and council members, they were, you're in a deficit. What could we do as citizens? Our park closes at the end of this month. We raised enough money where it costs the city nothing for Ruffner. We will buy all the supplies. As far as, will baseball have to reimburse us? Of course not. Absolutely not. If I can continue to raise funds and put it into another field, that would be fantastic. I'm all for kids and sports. My daughter was a state champion gymnast for Mount, gymnast when she was younger. I, I, I mean, I've traveled and, you know, cheered and she's a national competition for dance at John Carroll. I understand the passion. It gave her the drive to be in a biology major and pursuing a career in medicine. I understand the importance of, of kids and involved in sports. I got, I got that. And as Ms. Michael told you, we're more than willing to continue because Ruffner is a mess and we as a citizens need to chip in and, and fix our green space. It's one of the few things that Irondale has to offer that other communities can't. Mount Burke may have beautiful things. They don't have any green space because they're all about the buildings and bringing in the revenue. So that's why we have decided on Ruffner because it gave us enough space for a temporary spot. And we will pay for the supplies. That, that's pretty much how it went. We can't afford Beacon. My comment's not on the Dog Park. It's a suggestion that the council would consider. I understand the whole thing with the merit-based performance, long-term situation. If I can just make a suggestion, the way you've got it now, you've got to come up with a fix because it was under budgeted. All right, I understand that. But in the future, when you're working on this, the thing that's confusing for me is when I hear the word bonus. For me, bonus means everybody. There is an incentive for everybody to do hard work, to, to get a bonus. But this is for long-term employees. So I'm asking that you consider using a different terminology instead of bonus when you, when you work in your budget information.
It's not, it's not bonus. It's longevity pay. You get so many dollars for so many years.
I kept hearing bonus, bonus throughout the discussion.
I use like Christmas bonus. Not, this is a bonus, but I said, they look at it as, it is a Christmas.
And it's based on performance, right?
We do have a lot of things for the long term. Yes, Mayor?
Got one more.
Because I'm, I usually work at this time of night and I'm in private practice, so it's hard for me to get here, but I was committed to get here because truly, I didn't even know until someone reached out to me because they knew I was a baseball parent, that there was a discussion of moving to Dog Park. So I come to the work session before about it, but I was the only one here. So I don't know if the information was disseminated as it should, but that being said, we actually have no problem with working with the Dog People. Because we just think like Field Four is not appropriate. Field Two is very appropriate for a Dog Park because we actually do use Field Four and the person who commented had been involved in the park to my knowledge for the last three years. So, but we do use Field Four. So we were all cool with using Field Two because it actually gives you your own space and parking lot. It's just a different gravel parking lot. So we are open to that. And we are open to working with them because if you use Field Infield, it doesn't matter. As a Dog Park, who's going to pay to turn it back into a baseball field? Clay dirt is not, baseball infield dirt is not cheap. It's like 30 to 50 dollars a yard. And it has to be a certain regulation thickness and it has to be a certain amount. So you're looking at $20,000 to turn it back into a ballpark, but 1,200 dollars to turn it into a Dog, I mean, back into a baseball field, but 1,200, 1,500 dollars to turn it into a Dog Park. So for me, it's financial. We barely are making it like we've talked before, getting the kids out and paying. And we're not going to turn kids away. So if a kid can't pay, we make it happen. And we're doing all of that. So coming up now with $20,000 in the future to turn a field we've used back into a field, it makes, it, like we're drowning already, now we're drowning in a monsoon. So that, that was my own, only concern because we actually do play baseball out there and JCA also leases one of the fields as their home field.
One of the, just from a finance committee standpoint, some feedback when you're there. Obviously, if we took a holistic look at Ruffner and shuffled the fields around, that would be a factor, a, a cost factor that we would have to understand as part of our project.
And I agree, Ruffner needs to be redone and we've kind of, I don't know, I guess my kids are, I'm the oldest Ball Park parent in the room currently. The fields, each field has its own unique issues.
I understand.
And so, yeah, we have always agreed. We've just figured out how to work around those issues.
I guess that makes sense. Yeah, one of my, one of my pushbacks is, once again, we've, we've just, we've been talking about this since October twenty-six, something like that.
I didn't know anything about it. And, and well, okay, and I don't get on into the back and forth on Facebook, so I usually just don't hear. I don't get it unless someone comes to me, but someone personally came to me and said, don't your kids play baseball? And I was like, yeah.
The conversation didn't start, this conversation didn't start until after we took action. Where we may have been talking about it for a good month and a half prior, so that's why we're kind of.
See, I wish I had known because then we could have actually worked with them because we have the hikers who come through when we play baseball and there's someone who rides a horse through and watches the game. So, you know, I want to say. And I think Irondale has due.
Your point is made and I think that's the idea. I think from the council's standpoint, we're going to go over my threshold. Is there any move, adjourn? Let's move to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Thank you.